Before we get started, I'd like to just set some ground rules. Number one, and most importantly, please set your phones on vibrate or silence. And secondly, if you come up on call to the public, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, three minutes to speak. With that said, welcome to our November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five board meeting. And at this time, I'd like to go to item A, call to the, call, call this meeting to order. And we'd like to ask the birthday girl, Carrie Munoz, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Keep it up, and I'm gonna sing happy birthday to you. Yeah, I'm gonna have Alma sing for you. And a happy belated birthday to the superintendent of schools, Maya Donnelly. Okay, Alejandro, happy birthday. Wow, awesome. Okay, we'll go ahead and go on to item B, adoption of the agenda. Mister manager, good morning, sir.
Good morning. There's no changes to the agenda.
Okay, yeah, I think the sheriff's called yesterday, and you were in a meeting. Item eleven. There's no eleven, item. That's okay. Item three, okay, okay, so I will ask for a motion to adopt the agenda and allow chair to deviate and remove item three.
I move.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, let's move on to call to the public. I have several slips here. Number one is Susan Fabian. Good morning, Susan.
My name is Susan Phobian. I live at twenty Kansas Avenue. One year, you're gonna get it. Others have, you will eventually. In two thousand, you approved my septic line to run through my neighbor's neighboring property. I didn't. In two thousand twenty-five, the neighbor cut and capped that septic line. It's not illegal. I ceased having plumbing on July nineteenth of this year. The county's prescribed remedy required unobtainable access to the leach field that you sold off in twenty twenty with no easement restrictions. I have a roof, electricity, and water. I cannot shower, do laundry, mop, wash dishes, cook, or bake. The county has caused my diminishing property value. Concepts of remedy have come and gone. I continue in the unraveling of my life. I lack order, cleanliness, systems. I lack normalcy. There is no other body for me to seek relief or remedy. Please understand the humiliation of asking to drop by a friend's house, not for a cup of coffee or tea, but for a shower. Women are born with God-given dignity. Some give it away. You've taken mine.
Thank you. Bonnie? Okay, thank you.
I always say, just think of a T and a tree. That's how you can pronounce it. Good morning, supervisors, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Dr. Bonnie T. Tree of Rio Rico. I'm here today to talk about the Volteri lots. I've been interested in purchasing lots that I own the property right next to for years. They originally intended these lots to be conservation easements. Thus, the deed restrictions are so I've been told. I'd like to see the county offer them to the citizens of Santa Cruz County that have expressed an interest in them and/or have the first right of refusal. I have no problem with the county leaving the deed restrictions on them. We have already have so much building in Rio Rico with a complete disregard for erosion or the environment. I can tell you where you can buy a house at. Right now, that's for sale. And when it rains or during monsoon season, you're gonna have your own private moat. And you'll have it until it dries up. Every time we get a good rain or a monsoon, you read on Facebook, people from Rio Rico are wanting the supervisors to buy gutters for their houses. And it's because of where their homes are built. All you have to think about is they're downhill. Everything is gonna come down, and there's no drainage. That's why we have those conservation lots. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Anyone else wishing to come up on call to the public? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item D, current events. Mister Davis, how you doing? Good morning, sir.
So just have three little updates. So I got to visit the council on aging and last week, and when I was there, I, I ran into Mister Carranza. I don't know if you remember him. I hadn't seen him for like thirty-five years. He was a teacher at, at Pearson Muto School. So it was very nice to see him and, and have a meal with him and, and all that community. Do you remember Mister Carranza by any chance?
Absolutely.
I hadn't seen him for thirty years, so it was, it's great to see him.
He was the worst referee we ever had. No, I'm just kidding. I love the guy. I love the guy. I'm just kidding.
Also, the, the county manager, the deputy county manager, Mauricio, and myself went and visited Crossword Missions, and we got to do a tour of the facilities and everything they do. I think something important to say is that they offer two meals a day. They offer lunch and, and dinner. They provide other services. So I, I think I'm gonna ask Shannon if she could put, put a link to Crossword Mission because they're doing a, a great job. And lastly, I got to go to the veterans' parade. Took my family. It was a really nice event. Then we went to, to the city hall. They had a ceremony. So I just wanna thank all the veterans for their service.
Thank you, thank you. Vice Chairman Fanning, good morning, sir.
Good morning. Relatively small list today. I did have an opportunity to attend the rural water working group on Friday. It was an all-day affair, and we discussed rural water issues and concerns from throughout the state. And we were able to, a few folks from the county were able to meet with and discuss with Attorney General Chris Mays and some of her staff related to some of the concerns that have been brought up within our county. So that was a, that was a wonderful, wonderful experience and I'll continue to learn more and more. Yesterday, I went up to the state of Arizona, DPS runs this. It's the Arizona Sex Offender Management Board. And we're meeting on a consistent basis. Quite a few folks there that are taking a look at legislation based on what was passed recently. And once again, it's a, it's a wonderful learning environment for me. Lastly, on a personal note, I want to congratulate my brother, Chris "Cubby" Fanning, for just recently being inducted into the Pima County Sports Hall of Fame. Thank you.
Congratulations. I just, we'll be brief. I, I just have a couple items to report. First and foremost, I also attended the Veterans Day Parade. The city of Nogales did an amazing job. It was a wonderful event, and it's good to mingle with the community and some of the veterans. And, and I too want to thank our veterans, and especially those that gave the ultimate sacrifice. Yesterday, I had Doctor Varo, Doctor, Doctor Bejarano stopped by my office, and it was good to see him. He was my first teaching boss. He, he hired me to come down to Nogales and educate our youth, and I thank him for that. He was here doing some county business, and he thought he'd stop by, he and his wife. So it was good to see him. He, he meant a lot to our community. He was a, a teacher, a principal, athletic director, and superintendent. And I, I thank him for what he did in this community. And that's all I have to report. Next, we'll go ahead and move on to item two, managers' report.
Mister chairs members of the board, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
You don't want to talk about your squats or anything? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item E, department reports and activities. Item one, finance, cash, and investments, expenditures, and revenue reports. Maria, good morning.
Good morning, Mister Chair and members of the board. For the cash and investment report, we have, for the general fund, we have twenty-two million four hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eight cents with an invested amount of sixteen million five hundred fifty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-three. For the road fund, we have five million eight hundred thousand twenty-seven with an invested amount of five million one hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-six. For the flood control, we have three million two hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred twenty-four with an invested amount of three hundred eight thousand six hundred seventy-six. For the jail district, we have seven million one hundred fourteen thousand ninety-three with an invested amount of four million three hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred twenty-three. For a total amount of sixty-one million two hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred thirty-three and an invested amount of twenty million five hundred nine thousand six hundred forty-six. And the estimated end-of-month balance is ten million twenty-three thousand three hundred sixty-six.
Any, any questions, gentlemen? Thank you, thank you, Maria. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item two, department updates.
Good morning, Mister Chair, members of the board. We're here together, Maya and I, to discuss the press release that was sent out by the treasurer's office on October thirtieth. Yeah, I'm sure you've read it, but I'm gonna go ahead and go through some of it as well. So on that date, we announced that corrected twenty-twenty-five property tax notices will be sent out to those owners within the Santa Cruz County, Santa Cruz Elementary School District number twenty-eight. They're currently in the, at the printer. We're waiting for proofs to verify again for accuracy and get those sent out. We've also included the press release with the tax bill for those who have not had the opportunity to see the, the press release. The initial notices mistakenly included the type-three school district tax rate twice on there. So that's where they saw the ten point three eight five four primary tax rate for Santa Cruz Elementary. So what our press release indicated is that that will be corrected to the correct rate of eight point eight two four eight, which includes both the Santa Cruz Elementary's District twenty-eighth's primary tax rate of seven point two six four two and the additional levy for the type-three school districts of one point five six oh six. So that is stated in their letter. This finding really connected myself with the school superintendent, even more so because we've built a great relationship. But we've already implemented a new plan for the next year taxes so that we can ensure that this does not happen. This is, though, a, a great catch by all three offices, and we immediately took action to correct it. The good thing here as well is that there's gonna be a decrease in the tax bills for those, for that area. So those who have paid full-year payments will get a reimbursement for the additional difference they paid, for the adjusted difference. And those who have made first-half installment payments will get a credit of the difference applied to their second-half installment. So everybody will be made whole and corrected, and everybody will receive their updated tax notices for their records. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
No, I just, I just want to say thank you so much. I know that we had a meeting at eight o'clock this morning to discuss with some concerned constituents. The information that was given from, from our team was spot-on. So thank you so much for being willing, and I know we have another meeting this evening. But want to say thank you for, for both of you working together like you do and everything that you do for our county.
Me too, Mister Boss. I just wanna, I wanna thank you, Maya, for working hard, like, like you said. Like working together. I know it's been challenging, but I really appreciate all the effort that you put into updating people, sending those press releases.
Of course, we will do what we can. We will always do the right thing. And Maya and I are both new to our positions. I'm, she's newer than I am to my position. But we're learning together through the processes. We're also reviewing statutes and identifying some processes that will change for the next season and who does what in, for the tax creation.
Thank you for your outreach.
Of course.
It's really important. We appreciate it.
Of course. A couple of other updates. I just wanted to, one, just thank my staff and really give them a, a kudos, including my chief deputy treasurer, Bettina. This is her first tax season. She didn't know what it was gonna be like, but she definitely handled it extremely well. Gave me the peace of mind to be able to step away even during tax season on some times. So she really managed and handled the office and the staff properly. Our staff as well, my hats off to them, kudos. Bettina and I are not allowed to process tax payments, so the burden is really all on our staff. We help where we can. We organize the mail by date. We open. We help them sort it out. We spent probably two weeks staying late from eight to probably eight at night just processing tax payments. But the result of that was that we were on track daily. We didn't have any pending payments. It really truly helped decrease the number of calls that we were receiving in regards to their checks being cashed for two reasons. One, we were staying late and processing everything received in the mail that same day. And there was days that we received two P O. box, two post office boxes full. And if you can imagine, there's one envelope with one check and one stub, so it has to be extremely compacted and heavy in order to get full. So we did have quite a bit of work for us to handle, but our staff handled it very well. We're up to date. We were up to date every single day. We did not have any delays, and so our collections are, are there. We're, we're, we're processing as normal now, again. So just want to give them a big shout-out because it is a lot of work. A lot of people don't realize what tax season looks like, and it's extremely hectic and tiring and stressful. But we got it done this year extremely fast, so just wanted to give them a huge shout-out. And I also want to take the opportunity that I have somebody here with me who has not been here during one of our board meetings. But I took over this position about a year and a half ago, and there's only been one person outside of our county who's ever been willing to help by providing her expertise, her knowledge, her skill sets, her experience. And I have her here today, so I want to give her a special recognition in front of our board, just a thank you of gratitude as well. Miss Sarah Benatar, our Coconino, the Coconino County Treasurer, who has so selfishly been helping me, who had originally committed to a year. She's almost going on to two years, and she just might be the Santa Cruz County Treasurer with me for as long as I am here. So I just want to thank her because I am a pain. I do call anytime I need at any hour, or emails, and she's there. She picks up the phone, or she calls you back, or she responds to your email. She's a great support system and is really helping me make sure that we are running this office the way it should be, following all policies and procedures, or implementing new policies and procedures, statutes, and just also helping me educate our county on what it is that we need to do and who needs, whose functions are whose functions. And so I just want to thank her because without her, I don't think I would be this successful that I've been at this point. So Sarah, thank you so much for all of your help and everything that you do for us.
Mister Boss, the board has two challenge coins today. One is for you because you've done an amazing job, you know. You came in at a very critical and crucial time, and you endured a lot of criticism. And we really value what you've done, and we thank you. Thank you very much. Secondly, from day one, when the treasure issue happened, Sarah right away came to lend a hand. I had known, I've known Sarah since, well, for at least ten, twelve years. And she's always been a leader. She's always been an incredible helping hand to anyone that needs help. And, and she came here selflessly, as you mentioned, never asking for a stipend. And that's incredible. And as a matter of fact, she got in trouble with her board back in Coconino, I believe. But, but we thank you. And, and not only that, Sarah is gonna run for the NACO vice, second vice president this year, and we will support you one hundred percent because you are a true leader for Arizona and hopefully for the nation here in, in the upcoming year. Thank you for what you do, and thank you for what you've done for Santa Cruz County, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Can you come up, please?
How do you want it?
Okay, you guys can do it over to the side so we don't see the light on your.
Oh, okay. Here? Mine and Bugs bald head.
Ah, hey!
Is that what you're saying, Jim?
Hey, be nice.
If you guys wanna move all the way away from the seat.
Yeah, I can. Here or more?
Oh, there.
There we go.
I'm gonna cut it off.
Okay.
I keep it, sorry. Ready?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, absolutely.
So, uh, chairman, members of the board, uh, thank you. This is, is very, um, humbling and, and really appreciate it. Um, it's been an honor to come help, you know. It's, whenever one county struggles, we all struggle. And so it was the right thing to do. I couldn't imagine not offering to help, um, and your treasurer, Alejandro, um, he's amazing. So he's really stepping up. He understands, and he wants to do things right, um, and I really appreciate and value that. So you're very fortunate to have such an amazing treasurer here now, um, to do things correctly um, and to, you know, safeguard public money. It's about trust, and that's what this is about. And so, um, appreciate you, uh, putting your trust in me to be able to help, um, and then putting your trust in treasurer Paz for everything that he's done and continues to do and work towards. Um, and again, thank you. I'm, it's a pleasure, and it's truly been, um, just very humbling and honor, just an honor to come and help you all um, through the almost two years, and, uh, treasurer Paz, as I'll continue to be here as a resource, um, in any way I can, so thank you.
You're a gem.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, we'll go ahead and leave item F, executive session to the end. I'll move to, uh, at this time, I'd like to entertain, um, a motion to recess general session and move into board of equalization.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Okay. Item one, discussion, possible action to approve the tax year twenty-twenty-six appeal decision, acceptance of the petitioners' withdrawal of petition for review of notice of change. And at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Move. Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the board of equalization and, uh, reconvene the general session.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Now we have, uh, item I, consent agenda excluding item three. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
I move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. And, uh, I believe, uh, we have this item F and G. Item F is, uh, executive session, one pursuant to A R S three-eight dash four-three-one point zero-three A three, discussion consultation for legal advice and/or direction regarding ratification of the litigation related to the good far embezzlement. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to, um, move into executive session.
I move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I would like to ask Mr. May, if you could please provide, before we go into executive session, if you could provide some information for the public and, uh, the reason that we're going into this executive session, anything that you can provide?
Uh, in short, uh, supervisor Davis, it's because the executive session is an opportunity for the board to ask questions of the legal counsel. And so it is an attorney-client privileged type of, uh, event. We will be dis, uh, we will, uh, review as noted, uh, some of the, uh, basically the items that will, the board will be considering, uh, for, um, voting on, you know, under, and ratification. So to make sure that the supervisors, as the client of the, well, and the county, as a client, okay, let me back up. Supervisors as the, uh, authorized representatives of the county, uh, they are, you are all informed as to what, uh, is to be voted on and be allowed to ask questions. Uh, and then you will be, you can make any of, uh, your votes on the action item under G one, uh, knowingly and intelligently, voluntarily.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and, uh, move into executive.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn our executive session and reconvene into a general session.
I move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Now, all we have left is item G one. Discussion, possible action to ratify pursuant to ARS 38-431.05b for all legal actions on behalf of the San Luis County to recover any and all monies from all liable persons and entities in connection with the GUTFAR embezzlement. For more detailed explanation, see special notice memorandum and detailed written description. Attached to electronic agenda specified web pages and copies available at the meeting. Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion. And Bob, I believe we have two motions today.
We do, Mr. Chair.
Can you explain why?
I would be happy to. Really, there are two motions included or inferred within the action item number one. There's extensive explanation within the memorandum, and that is part of the action item. It's attached. It's been made available to the public. And actually, a couple of different arenas as well. There's the board's agenda website, as well as then it's also been added to the GUTFAR website that has all of the information. And actually, a couple of different arenas as well. There's the board's agenda website, as well as then it's also been added to the Gutfar website that has all of the information that's been out there for a year and a half. And the first, well, let me finish that thought, is the memorandum goes into great detail as the basis for this ratification and how this has come about and how we were and the county was made aware of maybe a technical issue that just needs to be addressed and covered. The motions, then, there are two motions. And the first is the ratification of all of the legal action, especially with regards to both of the cases that the board, the county, the public has been aware of for the last, especially a little over a year. The, there is the one case, there is the one case against the Gutfars, and then there's the second case against the Auditor General. Then it also includes then any and other all legal actions taken by the county's council as part of or in connection with these two lawsuits. The second motion is then just to cover the base of, and again, meet a technicality, further move that the Board of Supervisors vote to authorize any other legal action necessary to maintain or pursue legal recourse against the Auditor General and the state relating to or in connection with Maricopa County Superior Court case number CB 2024-032742. This is related to then that the, the board, now really two boards, and the county as a whole have been very clear that they are of a strong position, and rightfully so, that an auditor general was the auditor for the county for the 10 years that the Gutfar embezzlement was going on. And yet, the Auditor General failed to discover, to exercise reasonable care, et cetera, that is further detailed in the pleadings that were made public and have been filed and are in the midst of being deliberated against with the court in Maricopa County. So this really, the second motion then just goes on to that it makes sure that going forward, all legal action is authorized by, and that the board has taken a vote on that in an open meeting, which is what is today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. May, really quick. So just to summarize, basically, I think you said if the public would want to know something, like the background and when it started, they can just go online. There's two memorandums, right? At least.
Absolutely, Supervisor Davis. There is, again, extensive information already on a public website that's been there. It records both the press releases, the criminal history, criminal case history that Department of Justice eventually filed and prosecuted, as well as the civil case that the county has filed and prosecuted. And that is sometimes referred to as this receivership case, where the receiver was appointed and has worked diligently to recover whatever properties and monies that were tied to the Gutfars. And again, an attempt to make the counties and the districts, for that matter, whole.
Thank you very much, Mr. May.
You're welcome, sir.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions? Let's ask for, at this time, I'd like to entertain the first motion.
I move.
I move. I'd like to make a motion to ratify all legal action on behalf of the Santa Cruz County, taken by county management, the county attorney's office, and the law firms of Snell and Wilmer and Weiss Brown, to recover any and all monies from all liable and responsible persons and entities as a result of the Gutfar embezzlement, including, number one, the county's filing of the lawsuit against Elizabeth Gutfar, her family and business entities on August 1st, 2024, in Pima County Superior Court, case number C 2024-535. And number two, the county's filing of a lawsuit against the Arizona Auditor General and the state of Arizona on November 14th, 2024, in Maricopa County Superior Court, case number CV 2024-032742. And number three, all legal actions taken by the county's council as part of or in connection with those two lawsuits.
Okay. A second. I'll go ahead and second. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. I further move that the Board of Supervisors vote to authorize any other legal action necessary to maintain or pursue legal recourse against the Auditor General and the state relating to or in connection with Maricopa County Superior Court case number CV 2024-032747.
Four two.
Four two, I'm sorry. Thank you. At this time, I'd like.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or any other question? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, gentlemen. I believe that's all the people's business. We have item J. Adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We're now adjourned. Good, good meeting.